Evening, it is Monday, May 6th, 2024. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everyone is present. You have the floor.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to personal appearances this evening. Uh, we have some new employees, uh, with us this evening, and we are going to do some new employee introductions by their, uh, department head. So whoever would like to start first, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'd like to introduce Jeff Anderson. Um, he is in the Parks Department. He is a part-time, uh, employee. Last year, he was a seasonal employee. We hired him for a thousand hours this summer. So you'll see, uh, Jeff in the parks, um, all over town, pickball courts and everything, mowing, maintaining, and doing all sorts of things in our, in our Parks Department. And we're glad to have him again, uh, this summer. Thanks, Jeff.
Welcome, Coach. Thanks for being here.
Good job, Jeff.
Steve Gahr, he's our street superintendent. He comes from Cameron. Um, he was the Parks Director there. He's got a lot of background in concrete and lawn maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, asphalt some, not, uh, working on that. Very helpful in securing equipment through state contracts. Um, very knowledgeable, big help out there.
Great, well welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Zach Calderon, fresh today. Welcome. He's got a background in equipment. He works on water breaks. He's, I mean, you put a piece of equipment under him and he can run any of it. Um, no questions about that. Big asset for, we need some equipment people out there. And a big asset for that, so.
So the Street Department?
Street Department. Sorry, didn't make that, street labor, sorry. New, I'm not very good at this yet.
Zach's no stranger to Carney, but, uh, welcome to the city.
Yep.
I do.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We got all the Street Department today. Alec Asol, he's a, he's a rehire. Had some issues the last time he was here. Um, but he's definitely an asset. Mowing, mowing strong, can run equipment. Um, willing to help anywhere he got, but, uh, he's a good addition.
Great.
I agree. Welcome back.
Good job, Max.
And then Wyatt, can you come up? So Wyatt is our new, um, IT person. Oh, he's gonna come up here. That's great. And, uh, and so Wyatt comes to us with a lot of experience, um, and a lot of things, but five and a half years of experience in network IT admin experience and, um, one and a half years of Munis experience. And both of those things are very helpful for us, and we're excited that we are able to, um, bring something that has been outsourced, um, and not the best responsiveness and a lot of frustration for staff in-house. And, um, he's hit the ground running and we're so happy that he's with us, so.
Welcome down.
Welcome.
Thanks, Wyatt. You can tell they can go if they want.
So you guys are more than welcome to stay for the meeting in entirety, but if you'd like to, uh, dismiss yourself, now is the perfect time.
Thank you for being here and, and, and welcome. Um, and I, I do appreciate staff. I know, um, that's been a directive of the board as we have new hires, you know, on a monthly basis or so, to bring them in here to, to introduce them to the board and the community. So thank you, uh, all of you for doing that this evening. Uh, next item is a consent agenda. Do we have any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to ordinances. Uh, the first ordinance this evening for the board to consider is a motion approving bill number 182024, presented by our Police Chief Mark Thomas, in ordinance approving the updated ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force, also known as Mo-Win Memorandum of Understanding. Uh, Chief, do you have a report on that?
I do. Uh, this is an ordinance approving the updated ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force, or Mo-Win Memorandum of Understanding. Whereas the Board of Aldermen approved ordinance 1557-2024, approving the ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force Memorandum of Understanding at their meeting on February 20th, 2024. And whereas an update to the memorandum has been generated by the Mo-Win Task Force to include the Kansas City Police Department's staffing and equipment and the removal of the North Moore Police Department. And whereas the primary mission of the Mo-Win Task Force will be the investigation and disruption of drug trafficking activities occurring in or affecting communities in Jackson, Clay, and Platt County. And whereas this memorandum will formalize relationships between the participating parties for law enforcement guidance and planning in order to maximize inter-agency cooperation and create a close knit cohesive unit capable of addressing the most complex problems facing the agencies participating in the task force. Being ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Carney, Missouri as follows.
Right, we'll take it from there, Chief.
Okay.
Uh, are there any questions from the board, uh, on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, if we could read the proposed ordinance, uh, first time by, uh, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the updated ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force, Mo-Win Memorandum of Understanding.
Move to the first reading.
I'll second.
Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the updated ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force, Mo-Win Memorandum of Understanding.
Make a motion to approve on second reading.
All second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Ordinance passes unanimously on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number 192024, presented by Mark Thomas, Police Chief, in ordinance approving a subaward micro grant agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri, and Justice and Security Strategies, Inc., for a matching grant in amount of $46,000 for the Carney Police Department's Body-Worn Camera Program. Chief, you have a report?
I can give you just the basics on this instead of reading it. Our, our, uh, uh, body cameras and our video cameras in our cars are very dated, and they're reaching their end of their shelf life. So our guys reached out for a matching grant and were able to score a, a large $46,000, uh, grant that was gonna help us, uh, to update the, first, the, the body cameras, and then we're gonna go for updated, uh, uh, video cameras next. So that's our plan.
Just curious, Chief, uh, do you know what officer wrote the grant?
He's standing right there. Officer Parker helped, he and Sergeant Hager were both instrumental in our grants and stuff. They've done a fantastic job, I'll just say that. I commend both of them, uh, for, for putting in the extra effort. It takes a lot, and, and it's also a great, uh, collaboration with our staff and Steph, Stephanie, you've helped out a lot on it as well, so.
We appreciate everybody, uh, working collectively, uh, for that grant. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna point out that we don't have the entire, so it's a grant, a matching grant. So if we spend the entire $46,000, the city also has to spend $46,000. We don't have all of that budgeted in this current year's budget. However, uh, we, we are planning upon approval to make sure that the balance gets added to next year's budget. So I just wanted to let you guys know you'll be obligating for two years, this year and then next year.
Yes, of course. Chief, how long does a shelf life on this? We've, we've had body cameras before, and you said they're getting old. How long do they last?
Um, I'm guessing about, I'd probably defer to the guys that know a lot more about the nerd stuff. Um, but I would say, um, eight years tops.
Eight.
Um, wouldn't you, or if that?
Five. Eight's pushing it, five to eight.
Five days.
We've got some guys that are running, uh, when Sergeant Hager's dash cam just failed, um, it was on year seventeen.
Wow.
So they're, they're due.
Yeah.
Right. And, and that's what saves lives. It, it, it saves, uh, civil liability. It, it helps with our cases. It's, it's just a fact of life now that everybody needs to have it. And I'm in favor of upgrading.
Well, uh, thanks again to Officer Parker and Sergeant Hager and Stephanie and everybody involved with securing that grant. Uh, if we have no other questions, if we can read the proposed ordinance, uh, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a subaward micro grant agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri, and Justice and Security Strategies, Inc., for a matching grant in the amount of $46,000 for the Carney Police Department's Body-Worn Camera Program.
Make a motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a subaward micro grant agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri, and Justice and Security Strategies, Inc., for a matching grant in the amount of $46,000 for the Carney Police Department's Body-Worn Camera Program.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number 202024, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance approving a cost share agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council, also known as MARK, for the 2024 aerial photography project.
Every two years, Mid-America Regional Council heads a project where they, uh, fly the metro area. We're included in the MARK boundary, so we participate in their program and we, uh, they break up the total cost by population of all the metro cities and, and that covers our share of the, of this update.
Is this the second time we've done this?
Uh, we do it every two years, so we've done it several times, actually.
Yeah, 'cause I remember this before.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, if we could read the, um, proposed, uh, ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a cost share agreement with Mid-America Regional Council, MARK, for the 2024 aerial photography project.
I make a motion to approve on first read.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a cost share agreement with Mid-America Regional Council, MARK, for the 2024 aerial photography project.
Move to approve on second reading.
All second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Vote unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. We'll move on to resolutions this evening. First resolution is a motion approving Resolution 302024. Um, I don't see our city engineer here this evening. Uh, so I assume, uh, our city administrator will, uh, mention and discuss the resolution approving the 2024 Street Maintenance Project Contract with Metro Asphalt, Inc.
The good news, um, about this bid was that we received six bids, which was, uh, more than our engineer thought that we would. Um, and we got a great price. Metro Asphalt is who, um, who had the lowest and best bid. And I don't know if you have any other questions, but I'd be happy to answer any, if you do.
Any questions from the board on the proposed resolution?
I think it does a good job.
Yeah, same with you.
We've had, I think we've had them before.
We have.
We do good work.
If there are no other questions, if we can, uh, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 302024 as presented.
I move to approve Resolution 302024. Second amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a motion approving Resolution 312024, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign the new elevated 1 million gallon storage tank contract with Caldwell Tanks, Inc. Sheila, if you want to take that as well?
Sure, um, we received three bids for our water tower project. Um, this water tower, and I, at the dais is a copy of the plans, the, the actual plans. Um, it's going to be located at the same site where, um, where our current water tower is on I-35. And it will be located in between I-35, so a little bit closer to I-35 and the water tower. And once the new one is constructed and hooked up, the other one will be taken down. Um, we, the, the winning bid was $4,747,000. Um, in our budget, we had budgeted, um, $5,247,688 for both the tower and the disinfection bid that you guys are gonna be considering next. Um, and just happy and excited that it was pretty close, um, and, but it was under. So, um, that's always exciting when projects and bids come back and they are under what we had planned.
We will hold you to that, make sure there are no change orders.
The only question I have for staff is, this looks like the same plan and picture that we approved. Has there been any changes or just here for reference again?
Just, just reference.
Okay. Wanted to make sure. Any other questions from the board on the proposed resolution? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion approving Resolution 312024 as presented.
Motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Next item is a motion approving Resolution 322024. You're on deck again for, for Shelley. Uh, resolution approving the notice of award in water tower treatment plant improvements, floor and mine conversion contract with David E. Ross Construction Company.
So, um, this one, we only received two bids, but I don't think there are a lot of companies that can actually do this work. So, um, two bids is great. And, um, this, this winning bid is $94,800.
Is there any other questions from the board? If we can entertain a motion approving Resolution 322024 as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Uh, next resolution is a motion approving Resolution 332024, a resolution approving the notice of award in the Shadow Brook Storm Sewer Improvement Contract with V.F. Anderson Builders, LLC.
Um, on this one, super excited that we received nine bids. Um, in the actual resolution itself, which is item 5D in section one of the resolution, there is a Scribner's error. Uh, the very last little part says, that is in the agenda packet, says lump sum price. It was actually a unit cost price that was submitted. Um, I put on the dais in front of you just a little highlight of how you will be approving it with the Scribner's error corrected, where it says unit cost. Um, and this also, this one I was super nervous about. Our budget was, uh, $1,252,000. Um, the bid came in at $1,084,183, and there's a $40,000 force account. So hopefully, hopefully, we can even come in lower than the $184, um, but hope, and, and we won't go over. This is a complicated project, though, um, but one that is definitely needed.
It's been a long time coming to get to this point, so.
Yes, it has.
If there's no questions from the board, if we can entertain a motion approving Resolution 332024 as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Uh, we, uh, spent a lot of money tonight, but it's all in, in, uh, much-needed hip and structure upgrades. And, um, I, I'm, I'm really excited about this three projects, so. Uh, next, we'll move on to items for review and presentation. Uh, the first is the 2024 Employee Engagement Survey Results and Next Steps, presented by our city administrator, Sheila. And Sheila, you got the floor.
Thank you, and David is going to share it on YouTube for me. I did not properly clean with Ryan today, so. Um, so this, as probably everyone knows, um, in February 2024, um, the city pushed out a survey to all of our city employees, asking them to respond. Um, and this was, the idea for this was a request that the mayor and the board came up with, um, as part of my annual review. And so that's how this idea kinda came about. And this is kinda gonna just go through the results. The good thing about the survey is it's basically creating a baseline for us. So we're taking a measurement now, and then, um, as we go through the year, um, and we're going to, this will always be our baseline, and we'll be able to compare to, to these survey results. So the reason for a survey and why we care about employee engagement is because the most costly drain on city resources is unengaged employees and employee turnover. Um, and that is really why one of the board and the mayor's big priorities is to make sure that Carney is an employer of choice and that, um, that we want, that we're hiring people who not only want to work with us, but also want to feel like they're, they can stay with us and, and want to be here. So average cost of hiring an employee for a position before you even, their first day, is $4,129. Um, I just was at a conference last week, and this was one of the topics. And so I stole that figure from, uh, from my conference. Um, also, then, once we bring them into the door on their first day, it costs about six to nine months of their annual salary in training and onboarding costs. Um, and that's why, so for a $60,000 a year employee, it's costing the city $30,000 to $45,000 in, um, lost productivity because you have people helping teach, uh, answering a lot of questions, training. And so it's very costly to have turnover. And so, look at you, David, paying attention to me.
I saw your flip.
Changing things. Um, so we invited, uh, 54 employees to participate. Forty-five of our employees participated in the survey. That is 83% participation citywide. That is actually a really good, um, percentage of response, since this is the first time that we did it. Um, the Culture Amp, which is the software program that we are using for the survey, they really say that once people see us acting on the results, more people will realize that we are listening, and the response rate will go up even higher. But 83% for our first time is a really good response rate. And, um.
We're gonna shoot for 100% next.
We are, and you know, uh, the, the water plant, the sewer plant, and City Hall, Hall, all had 100% of response rate. The water and the sewer plant, like, right away, um, nobody even had to really badger them. Um, I'm gonna admit that, like, I kept asking City Hall employees to, um, to respond. And I know that the other department heads did as well, so. So this is kind of a summary of our results, and I just kind of want to explain. So first of all, 19 questions were asked, um, of employees, and they were kind of categorized in this organizational alignment, focus and accountability, communication, collaboration, and so, so on. And I have that detailed further down. But if you look at the responses here on the left-hand side, um, so where it's saying we received 45, and then you see these percentages, um, this is our employee population over all the departments. So every, the software accumulates people's answers. And so it, if it's 49% for organizational alignment, it means 49% of our employees citywide that answered the survey said that they either agreed with or, um, or strongly agreed with the question that was asked. And then you can see that the, there are colored boxes, and you have a minus or a plus. And that is my, for that location, it's, um, if it's red, it's a minus below the average population citywide. If it's green, it's the average plus for that location. And so looking at this, you can kind of see some interesting things. Um, you can see how some, a, a lot of the city hall categories are higher than the average employee population. Um, the police department's pretty close to the average employee population. And then the water plant and the sewer plant are, uh, a lot of reds. And then you can see that two employees from the Street Department, uh, they answered, but there's NAs there, and one from the park, and, and that's also NA. So to protect anonymity of employees, the survey will not show results for any group that is under four. And so, and that is purely to protect employee anonymity, if that makes sense. Um, you can also see that 17 of the responses, so the majority of our responses were from the Police Department. Um, where for the sewer plant, there's four employees responded. And so basically, the reason that I'm pointing that out is because even though you see all these reds here, one employee that is answering in the Sewer Department, one of four responses that maybe really doesn't agree with something, they're going to affect the results a lot more than one of 17 employees, um, at the Police Department, or one of 15. Does that make sense? And so those are all kinds of things that we have been talking about as department heads, um, and, and trying to understand these results and, and what does it mean. So, um, what I did on the following pages is I just broke out and then took a screenshot and stuck it in there for, so you can see what, what made, what questions made up organizational alignment. And you can see, um, how employees answered at each location. And then also for focus and accountability, um, in the next group, um, same thing. Um, I, I do find this one fascinating. Like, at the water plant and the sewer plant, they are saying, yep, I know exactly what I need to do to be successful in my role. And at the Police Department and City Hall, um, I mean, they're, they're more red. Um, and I don't know what the answer is. Like, I don't know, is it because at City Hall and the Police Department, we had more employees that are under a year, um, in tenure? I don't know if it's because we had new supervisors at the, at those locations. Um, and we will find, we're, we're gonna be talking to employees and getting feedback and kind of asking, like, hey, why do you think that somebody would have not agreed? Um, to get more information, but we haven't got to that point yet. Um, communication, or this is communication and collaboration. One thing that I have heard over and over again is that, um, that we have a, employees don't feel like we are commu, doing a good job of communicating with them. Um, however, it wasn't our lowest score. I mean, people are, you know, 53% of our employees agree or strongly agree that we are communicating and collaborating. Um, on role clarity, the, there are two questions, um, in this group that department heads, there are, because there are 19 questions, we can't focus on all of them. So department heads, um, talked and really looked at all of these questions, and we selected three to really focus on in the short term to try to impact and raise the scores. to try to impact and raise the scores on three of the questions. Two of these are under role clarity. And day-to-day decisions here demonstrate that quality and improvement are top priorities, and the leaders at the city of Carney have communicated a vision that motivates me. Those are two of our three questions. Um, and the reason that we picked them are because we think that if we can move the needle on these questions, it will move the needle on all the questions. And then, um, enablement, uh, is the next detail. And maybe I should pause and ask if you guys have any questions about any of this. Okay, and then, um, development, followed by confidence. Um, confidence was where our employees really scored the, the, um, lowest, or scored the city the lowest. And the city of Carney effectively directs resources, funding people and efforts towards city goals. And it's interesting, um, you can see that at city hall, the people that are the closest to all the changes that have went on in the budget, um, those scores are higher than people out at different locations, that maybe they didn't have the same communic, the same information communicated to them. And so it's super important to remember that, especially if, you know, if you're feeling defeated, like, these are just employees' perceptions, doesn't necessarily mean that it's true. And what we have to do as leaders is we have to get in, and we have to talk, and ask questions, and understand, and do a better job of communicating what we're doing, the changes that are being made, and so on. So our focus areas are these three, um, questions. Once department heads kind of came to a consensus on what three questions we were going to select, I thought it was fascinating. The very first one, day-to-day decisions here demonstrate that quality and improvements are top priorities. That is very operational-based. And so, um, so basically, if we can work on changing this perception, I think that that will take all the operational questions and help us move the needle. Um, and then we have the city of Carney effectively directs resources, um, towards company goals. That is very much financial, very much budget. And we have had all-employee budget sessions the last two years. Um, not everyone has attended, and sometimes budget is harder to comprehend, um, and to understand. So, and I love budget, so I'm really excited to be working on this one. And then the leaders at the city of Carney have communicated a vision that motivates me. That's a cultural question. And so we have three very different, um, focus areas that we're going to be focusing on and trying to understand, um, understand and listen to what employees are saying, and then see what we can do to make, make it better, if that makes sense. And so, uh, what's next? Really, first, start by understanding. Understanding the survey results, what people were thinking, ask the questions, not in a large group, but in smaller groups. Um, then act on what we are hearing, um, and then repeating the, the measuring. And what we are doing and that, um, and what we have talked about, really with all the supervisors, um, but especially department heads, what, what we're going to be really focusing on, small, small-team discussions. Um, we're already doing monthly employee newsletters, and I think that the employees are enjoying them. I think the mayor's enjoying them. And then, um, quarterly all-team meetings, where we're going to hit on cultural, operational, and financial, followed by employee question and answer. And then, um, all supervisors are going to start meeting with every single direct report by monthly at one-on-one meetings, um, to just do coaching, support, and accountability. And so I will answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions from the board? I'll say I, uh, I appreciate our city administrator and department heads taking that directive. I, I gave a fast turn, a fast deadline on that, and we were able to get it out to, to all of our employees. Being an employer of choice is something that's very important to me. Um, our employees are, are, are seen as our best asset here at the city of Carney. And I would be a fool to think that we're gonna ever be perfect. And it's gonna, I think there's gonna always, these surveys are gonna always tell us something, but at least we're, it gives us some good information. You mentioned that we have a good baseline to, to proactively move forward and try to be the best we can be. So thank you so much for, uh, your time and efforts there. And then each one of the staff members that took the time to, to share their results.
Be possible to get added to the list for the employee newsletter?
Yes, I would be happy to.
I'd like that too.
Okay. It's on the door over there if you want to see this month's, but I will add you all to the following ones.
All right, uh, next item is the six-month financial report uh, for the, um, ending of March 31st, 2023, uh, by Stephanie Harris, our finance director. Stephanie, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening. Um, this report, six-month financials are required to be published every six months. Um, I mean, they have to be published within 30 days of the ending of the fiscal year, so they were due by April 30th to be published in the paper, which was really April 25th this year, since that was the last time the paper was published, in April. So they were published, um, don't know if any of you saw them in the Courier, but hopefully. If you want to see them again, they are there. Just briefly go over the format. First column is year-to-date, uh, basically fiscal year ended. Um, the next column is the budget for the year, and that would be as amended in amendments you made throughout the year. Next column, amount is over or under budget. And then the last column is where we are in, based on, you know, 100% of the year at that point had elapsed, and where this account, or where those line items came in as a percentage of budget. Um, unaudited figures will be the first thing that I say. These numbers are not going to be your final numbers that appear on your audited financial statements, because we will make entries, um, that will affect them in accordance with GASP, governmental accounting standards. Um, but, and then if we find anything upon our review, I did go through line item by line item pretty well. Um, so I feel really comfortable with a lot of these numbers, um, but there will be changes. Um, this is very typical. Um, I guess overall, I will say that the budget looks good. I mean, where we are compared to budget, almost every fund, uh, looks good. Um, expenses didn't really run over budget almost anywhere, which is great. Revenues came in higher, um, tax revenue was a little bit higher than expected, so were licenses and permits, um, interest, as we all know, um, did better this past year. So that is great. Um, like I said, expenditures, um, were pretty much under solid waste, being the only category that was over in the general fund, um, and that was not even by very much. No, no, if there's any, any else that I would significantly point out, um, you guys, I'll give you a minute to briefly look through and see if you have any questions. As always, if you ever have questions, call me, or email me, whatever you choose, and let me know, or ask, I'll be happy to answer. The last section on the very last page is where we are with our debt, um, where we were as of the last six-month report, rolling forward to where we were as of 3/31/23. Um, so that will give you an idea of just where our debt stood at 3/31/23.
Any questions from the board of our finance director and her report?
What about, I know Alderman Holt talked about it before, the marijuana tax?
Um, it is lumped in with other taxes.
Okay.
Um, and I would have, I'd probably go get that for you real quick. How about we do that after the meeting, or if everybody wants to know?
Yeah, you can just send us an email. We'd just be curious to see where that's at.
Yeah. I, I know that it has been a very good addition to most cities.
Our, our dispensary seems to be very busy every time I go by.
It's about 10,000 a month.
My, my question is, how long will that sustain? I mean, you know, it's a new thing, is that a big buzz? And then it, kind of like when you open up a new restaurant?
Did you just use the word buzz when you're talking about?
Yeah, nobody really knows that. I can tell you that at this point, they've been open a year almost. Um, and I don't know that I've seen any slowdown anywhere that I'm aware of.
I would be surprised if it would, yeah.
But the newness might, who knows?
Thank you so much for that report. Uh, next item is mayor's communications. I have a few items I want to mention this evening. Uh, first is, I want to thank the board. Uh, under the consent agenda this evening, uh, was a recommendation of an appointment for, uh, two individuals to our parks board. Um, so, uh, thank you in advance to Jeff Hutton and Jennifer Rose, our two newest park board members. Um, they both express interest, obviously, in serving in that capacity, and, uh, we're, we're excited to have our, our park board officially full, I believe, again, so. Next regular scheduled meeting, May 20th. I, I have requested Republic to be here. Tyler Riordan and, and the territory manager will be here to address the boards and residents' concerns on their, um, uh, service that they've been providing us. So, uh, next, next Monday, our next Monday meeting, May 20th, will be here, uh, with a presentation that's hopefully satisfactory to the board there. And last, but certainly not least, I want to show some appreciation to our police chief, Mr. Mark Thomas, attended the Missouri Police Chiefs Association Conference last week. I had a pleasure to chat with him a little bit, and I don't, I want to speak for him, but I believe he, what he told me is it's some of the best training he's ever had in his 40-plus years in law enforcement. So, um, I couldn't tell you the last time we had a, a chief attend that conference, but, uh, thank you for, for being there and, uh, bringing back some of that knowledge to Carney.
It was great. Would have been better, so.
Great. That concludes my mayor's communications. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
Um, so the next regular board meeting, as the mayor mentioned, will be Monday, May 20th at 6:30 PM, right here. Um, city staff is initiating a development review committee process, and we're hoping that that improves the experience of, um, developers or anyone that wants to invest in the city, um, to basically streamline it for them so that all the people, um, that have all the answers to the questions, or at least know where the answers can be found, um, are in one place at one time, um, to help get them off to a good start so that we can have a good plan. And then, um, not listed on here, but just found out that the city of Carney won the, um, MML Innovation Award for our 19th Street Interchange and Complete Street Project, um, in the medium category. So that is all this people that, um, are 5,000 to 15,000 people in population. There were 23 applications submitted in that group this year. And so it is amazing that, um, our project won, and super excited about that. And so if you would like to attend the award, uh, awards dinner, that will be in Branson on Tuesday, September 17th. So let me know if you want to go to the MML conference, which will be more days than just that, or if you just want to attend the award dinner, um, since you're traveling, maybe want to go to the whole conference.
I would encourage any of our board members to, um, get involved with MML and attend the conferences and educational opportunities. Um, but for sure, we'll have somebody there to accept the award on behalf.
What's the date on that again?
September 17th. And I know, um, Shelley is going to be there, Carolyn's going to be there, and I'm going to go.
Great. All right, that concludes your report. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman King, do you have anything this evening? Alderman Holt?
Other than, um, the walkway on 19th Street, going from Trail to Trail, from, what is that, was that neighborhood? Greenfield and, on 19th, on the west side.
Falcon, Falcon, yeah.
Yeah, I've had a few complaints about the walkway there. Having a sign or something, a flashing light or something to where it's easier to cross over.
Yeah, so I, it's like the pedestrian crosswalk there. I've, I've too filled in some concerns. Um, I had a discussion with staff last week, or maybe the week before. Um, I had a resident contact me and said somebody was walking with their earbuds in, didn't even, wasn't even paying attention, and walked right in front of them. Um, so it, it is an area that, where we have some great opportunities. We're looking for funding to, to do some crosswalk safety improvements, much like we have at Stonecrest Drive and 19th Street, and, uh,
At Porter Ridge?
Porter, yeah, uh, Porter Ridge Road and 92 Highway.
Nation.
And then the Nation Road Crosswalk as well, or, um, to Dogwood Elementary. Oh, no, it was actually, um, I had it in my mayor's meeting last Monday night, is where we had some residents here, uh, misspoke there. Um, but, um, it's definitely an area we need to, to look at, an opportunity to improve safety, for sure. Thanks for sharing that. Alderman Holt?
Well, I, um, we have a pothole problem on 19th Street, east of Pickleball Court. I watched a guy on a motorcycle yesterday about bite the big one, because he wasn't paying attention, and he hit that pothole pretty good. And he did save his bike, but I thought he was going down. It's creepy. Well, when I came over, it's still there, but.
I will make sure it gets addressed, because I did email about that.
Yeah, um, I, it didn't seem that bad on a car, but that motorcycle, you could tell it about flipped him, so. Something we need to, okay, thank you.
The email has been sent. I'll make sure it's addressed.
Alderman Lehman?
Couple of things, um, our city administrator just talked about the dev, development review committee. I applaud that. You know, this is, this is a baby step toward being developer-friendly. Um, and this is something that a lot of municipalities do. Um, you know, in today's society, when we're trying to compete for the projects out there, uh, the, the easier we can make it, and the more precise we can make it for the developers, um, to get all the information they need, or most of the information they need, uh, that's, that's very helpful for Carolyn and, and for the developers as they come in, so kudos for that. Lastly, uh, I'd like to thank Sunday for the, the new, uh, board packets. Um, they're a lot easier to find stuff. Um, it's, it's a very large agenda this month, so it's like, whoa. Uh, but, but I like what you've done, so.
Thank you.
It's, it's nice. That's all I have.
Alderman Barker?
I have nothing to add.
If there's nothing, uh, additional, if we can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, everybody have a good evening.